To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have one amendment to tonight's agenda. I'd like to amend the agenda to add an executive session at the end of our agenda to talk about a real estate acquisition. With that, can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Move to approve the amended agenda.
Second. It's been moved and second to approve the amended agenda and consent agenda items. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in fear of that motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Does anyone oppose? Then that motion, you know, carries. We have amended agenda. First up on our amended agenda is public recognitions and presentations. And first up is our first poet laureate, former deputy mayor Cynthia Pratt, to talk about April Poetry Month.
But before I begin, I want to just briefly say that as a poet laureate, there's work involved, which I'm really pleased about, believe it or not. So I just want to briefly tell you what I have been doing so you know that I'm actually doing something. So first of all, I've had a number of organizations ask me to give a poem before they start their meeting. I've also done two fairly significant readings, one in Tacoma representing Lacey. And then I've had the honor of being asked to go to Thurgood Marshall Middle School to give a workshop to middle school kids that are in this co-taught class. There's three classes. One, the language arts teacher teaches it, and then the citizen, I forgot to get it right, Citizen Scientist Institute teacher. So what I ended up assigning them some exercise and talking about is nature poetry and eco-poetry. And I think it went over pretty well. So I was excited about it. And what I am hoping to do with the help of the Olympia Poetry Network is to, in August, bring Rena Priest, who's the state poet laureate, as well as Ashley McBrunch, who is from Olympia, the current poet laureate, and then Lauren Davis, which I think is from Tacoma, and maybe Anne Spears, who I think is Beth Sean, and have the, and myself, and have the reading at Panorama in their big theater where we can spread out, and the residents can enjoy it, but so can the community. So that's kind of what I've been focusing on. And there's other ideas, but just so you know, I'm not just sitting there watching murder mysteries. So. God's going to write a commemorative poem about our parks because I love our parks, but I decided to go bigger than that. And so hopefully you'll like this, too. My city. Start with a welcoming sign, a child flying a kite designating Lacey a place you love. Then spin, name that space. Imagine bike rides down Karen Fraser Woodland Trail, or the Chahalas Western, even William Ives Trail. Dream yourself standing in Huntamore Park, or Wonderwood, The Rack, or maybe Freddy's St. Martin's, your favorite coffee bar you insist is the best because you know we expect coffee made exactly the way we want it. You could land on the coordinates of the best ethnic food around, a special nail salon, hair salon, cupcake bakery, and of course, your home improvement store with its clamps and bolts and two-by-fours. Start here with your city, Lacey, a place you love. Begin with what's around you, this city, and give yourselves a thumbs up. Make yourselves and my city a locality that hugs all its people, the woo-hoo when you walk or ride a bus, or see a happy face from a stranger, a child playing hopscotch with her friends, a friend you meet up with after the long haul of the pandemic. Lacey, a place I love, as so many of my neighbors do, showcasing little things, city staff in their work trucks waving as they pass by you doing your morning walk, or police officers helping kids shop for Christmas. Investing in our veterans, giving them support through the Veterans Hub, and before the pandemic, The Rack rocking with military families, their kids playing games, smiling and laughing. But I challenge you to think bigger and broader, because place extends beyond a coordinate or an actual impression. Friends, neighbors, business owners of Lacey, love this city. You are our city's footprint, the future that makes my city and yours, the permanent ink that draws the topography on this map. Read the legends on the chart. It says, "We are here to protect, to give back." Lacey, a place of love. Stay a compassionate city where we celebrate, connect, and create a better community, where acts of compassion memorialize what we stand for, these wrapped-up gifts to others, those 100,000 acts of kindness, or to those in need by helping provide a place that fills baskets of food. We are not an old city, but a proud city, a city that grows by providing hope to those that need hope, or services, roads, utilities, safety, but most of all, offering more than basics, a lifestyle that makes us whole, where we ourselves are the city, where we all offer to help us flourish into the unique place we all love, that remains and will remain the coordinates called my hometown. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, that's Lacey's poet laureate Cynthia Pratt, and we couldn't be prouder. Thank you. Thank you so much. You brought tears to my eyes. So next up on our public recognitions and presentations is our Lacey Youth Council report. Let's see Justin here.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and members of the Lacey City Council. My name is Justin Begley, and I attend Timberland High School and serve on the Lacey Youth City Council. As the youth mayor, I come as a representative of the youth of the youth council and present this youth council's interests, accomplishments, and our work and progress. This address was written by all members of the youth council, and members of the youth council have agreed upon this document for presentation. Over this past year, youth of Lacey have experienced and persevered through many challenges. First is coming back to school after a year of fully being virtual. This change has caused many youth members to experience anxiety, which in some cases led to depression in our youth community. I encourage this body to make resources more seen and accessible to the public and to our youth. I encourage this council to extend a hand to the school district in a joint program to support mental health and our resources to all students. In one of our meetings a few months ago, there was an idea for a teen center, or a place that all teens of our community can go to interact with one another and just hang out. I think this will be a great addition to our community and would be a great resource for all teens within our community. Secondly, and more recently, the youth of Lacey has expressed their concerns regarding racial injustice and sexual assault within our community, and more importantly, within our schools. A few months ago, students from schools within our area and our city took part in protests against racial injustice and sexual assault. This is a topic that I believe, and the youth council believes, should be a joint issue that needs more communication between, and cooperation between the city and our school district. In a meeting last month, with the Commission on Equity and members of the youth council, we took part in a joint meeting discussing equity within our community, our schools, and how to make our schools and city more equitable. One of the main points in our meeting was to have schools teach young students at a young age how to interact with one another. This would, in theory, teach them how to talk and treat one another. In another meeting last month, members of the youth council participated in a session led by the League of Women's Voters to learn about registering to vote and the importance of being a voter and voting. Members of the youth council learned facts and statistics around voting and how voting is becoming a less popular among the youth and young adults' age ranges. Some members of the youth council became advocates for the league, where they will now help other youth members and members of our community register to vote and spread awareness to vote. Throughout this past year, the youth council has experienced an interest and concern regarding the rising homelessness problem within our community. The youth council understands the legal statutes around how a city can handle the homeless, but many members of the youth community have expressed their concern around the growing problem. When youth members from our community were asked what their favorite part about Lacey is, many responded with the nature, the greenery, and the outdoor activities. Many are concerned that these beautiful features of Lacey will be overlooked by a growing homelessness problem and trash problem. Thank you all for your attention and time. These are all topics that us as a youth council are passionate about. All of us are serving on the, take pride in our city and our community and want nothing but the best for the people living within it. The youth council is open to giving our opinion on any and all city issues. Thank you very much, and I hope you enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We really appreciate you coming and giving us an update. And to let you know, this body will be meeting with North Hurston Public Schools next week. May 17th. So it's coming up here pretty quick, and we will write down a couple of your suggestions, and we'll work on that. And I appreciate it. There's also some state legislatures here before you. And so they're also working on the homelessness issue, and along with the litter. That's something that this council has written a letter about saying, we know there's a lot of litter out there, and it's a priority for us as well. So thank you. Appreciate your work. So next up, we're going to go to public comments on items not on the agenda. And we have three written public comments that's received. That's going to be part of the record. But we have a couple people who have pre-registered to speak via Zoom. And so can we bring them on? I think the first person's Karen Mesmer.
Hello. I'm sorry, you're not seeing me. You're just seeing downtown.
There you go. We see you now.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I am here to, as a volunteer with the Thurston Climate Action Team, and I want to invite you to attend our electric car show at Olympia High School on Saturday, April 30. This is going to be from 11:00 in the morning until 2:00 in the afternoon. We know that shifting to electric vehicles will be an important part of reducing our climate emissions. This is one of the actions in our Thurston Climate Action Plan that you've adopted. At this non-commercial and free event, we invite people to learn about electric cars by talking to people who own and drive them. We'll feature 25 different models of EVs, and we also have an electric school bus for people to see. This show is sponsored by the Olympia High School Climate Action Club and the Thurston Climate Action Team, and it is in cooperation with the National Organization of Drive Electric Earth Day. I hope we see you there, and we're looking forward to continuing to educate the community about electric cars. We know there's a lot of questions people have, and talking to people who own and drive them is a really great way for people to learn about electric cars. So thank you.
Thank you, Karen. And next up, we have Fern Humphrey. Can you bring Fern in? There you go. Hi, Fern. Can you please introduce yourself and keep your comments about three minutes?
Sure can. I am Fern Humphrey. I am calling, or calling. I am here today because I have some concerns about my little community in Lacey. I moved to Glamory Drive in May 2021. I've also lived in Thurston County all my life, so, and Lacey has been my home most of it. So we have this very unsafe corner on our street that people seem to fly around haphazardly if they don't really pay attention. We have had four incidences since I have moved in in May, and three of which were parked cars getting hit by somebody flying around the corner and not either overshooting the road or just not watching what they were doing, and also driving too fast for the conditions. On Monday, there was a really bad accident at that same corner, and somebody went through the bushes and into the cedar tree. I'm really worried that one of these days, it's gonna be a kid or somebody walking as we are two blocks from the Lacey Elementary School. We also are part of Holman Park. My backyard actually overlooks Holman Park. So there's a lot of kid activity around here. And every single one of these accidents has happened in the daytime hours, in the early afternoon. So it would be times that children would be out riding their bikes, walking, playing with their friends. And so I'm looking into what needs to be done to get some safety features put in at that corner. So people slow down, maybe a speed bump, a sign, something.
Okay. Thank you so much for your, I know exactly where you're talking about. I actually live in old historic Lacey on the other side, and so I grew up my childhood over by Holman Park. And it's, that area is, I know exactly where you're talking about. We will, yeah, we'll have staff follow up and look into this, and we have your information, and we'll keep you informed about what we're going to do next.
Okay, great. I'll be happy to be as involved as possible. I just worry about the state of my community.
Yeah. Thank you so much, and thank you for talking to the Lacey City Council.
Thank you.
So that is everyone who signed up to talk to this council on items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public wishing to address this council? Seeing none, we'll go on to our next agenda item, which is straight into our proclamations. And first up under proclamations is our 2022 state legislature appreciation. And I will start it off. City of Lacey Official Proclamation. Whereas the City of Lacey expresses its appreciation to the Washington State Legislature for their dedication to furthering our legislative priorities and strengthening the partnership with the City of Lacey and?
Whereas Senator Sam Hunt, Representative Lori Dolman, and Representative Jessica Bateman of the Legislative District 22, and Senator Jim McCune, Representative J.T. Wilcox, and Representative Andrew Barkus of Legislative District 2, serving the community members of Lacey have worked diligently in supporting the City of Lacey's 2022 legislative agenda. Agenda and.
Whereas legislators of the legislators of the 22nd and 2nd Legislative Districts continue to advocate for the Interstate 5 corridor between Mounts Road and Tomwater, resulting in the Move Ahead Washington Transportation Budget's inclusion of $75 million for the preliminary design, engineering, and ROW acquisition and.
Whereas legislators of the 22nd and 2nd Legislative Districts adopted a supplemental capital budget which invests $103,000 to the City of Lacey for adding electric vehicle charging stations at city parks and facilities for public use and.
Whereas legislators of the 22nd and the 2nd Legislative Districts adopted a supplemental capital budget which invests $515,000 to the City of Lacey to help establish an Oxford House pilot program with the city and a nonprofit provider and.
Whereas legislators of the 22nd and 2nd Legislative Districts helped address the City of Lacey's public safety concerns by returning less lethal options, providing clear definitions of imperative public safety terms such as physical force, and clarifying and amending circumstances in which the use of force is authorized, including lawful temporary investigative detentions and.
Whereas legislators of the 22nd and 2nd Legislative Districts provided continued state leadership in the homeless crisis by approving additional strategies and tools to address the growing unsheltered population, including securing $5 million in the supplemental transportation budget to help address public health and safety risks associated with homeless encampments on state-owned right-of-ways, of which $2 million is to be used for addressing litter and debris along freeways that serve as the gateways to our community, providing $45 million in the operating budget for rental assistance and eviction prevention, and providing $338 million in the capital budget for rapid and supportive housing efforts across the state and.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, and on behalf of the Lacey City Council, do hereby pay tribute to the legislators of the 22nd and 2nd Legislative Districts, Senator Sam Hunt, Senator Jim McCune, Representative Lori Dolan, Representative Jessica Bateman, Representative Andrew Barkis, and Representative J.T. Wilcox for their outstanding service, dedication, and commitment to the community members of Lacey, and urge all community members to join in us extending our appreciation for their public service, signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on April 21st, 22nd, 22nd. If anyone wants to come up and add something? Do you want to? You're here, we pay you, we pay you good money, so we're gonna. Here's the proclamation, and you want to add anything to this?
I would love to.
Of course you would.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It really does show how much you have done to support this community, not just this session, but every session, but when we just go through this list in a short session, it's an incredible number of accomplishments, and we are so appreciative of the work that you do on behalf of the citizens of this city. We are truly blessed to have a delegation that comes together in a meaningful way and puts partisan politics aside to really focus on how do we best support the community that we all live and work in. So I could not be more appreciative. Thank you so much.
It'd be nice to come here, and we'd like to shake your hand, actually.
You got the longest part.
Thank you.
I'm going to talk to you soon, too, about I-5. There's something that came up, I just, we're going to have a quick meeting, TRDCs.
Yeah. Yeah.
Did you notice you started picking up the trash?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Really appreciate it. Absolutely, Sam. Of course you can.
I'm going to get a ticket on the way out of here because I forgot to shake the cheese hand. We'll get you. I just wanted to give a personal thanks to you. I am this, I guess by far the senior member of the legislative team from this area, along with this guy back here, he's been here for a while. Anyway, this is the first time in the 22 years I've been in the legislature that any local government has said thank you, and I think that's amazing. We really honor and appreciate this because, you know, it's nice now and then to have somebody say thank you rather than screaming at us, and I want to thank you, and I want to thank you for all you do, too. So, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Well, we really do appreciate everything you do for not only for the City of Lacey but our wider community. You know, you're always there when we ask for help, and you've got some really great things done for our community lately, and I know you guys work hard, and we really, really appreciate it, and we'll continue to have a great working relationship with you on a bipartisan effort. So thank you so much for what you guys do. So next up is another proclamation, the Month of the Military Child.
Whereas thousands of brave Americans demonstrated demonstrate their courage and commitment to freedom by serving in the armed forces of the United States, both on active duty and in the National Guard and Reserves and.
Whereas the City of Lacey values and embraces partnerships with the military community through a variety of means and is part of the South Puget Sound Region designated a Great American Defense Community by the Association of Defense Communities and.
Whereas many North Thurston Public School District students have parents who have served or currently serve in the military and live in Lacey and.
Whereas these children and youth are a source of pride and honor to our community, and it is only fitting that we take time to recognize their contributions, celebrate their spirit, and let our former and active U.S. Armed Forces personnel know that while they are taking care of us, we are taking care of their children and.
Whereas since 1986, communities around the world have celebrated the Month of the Military Child in April, providing an opportunity for us to pay tribute to military children and youth for their commitment, struggles, and unconditional support of our troops, because when parents serve in the military, their kids serve too and.
Whereas a month-long salute to military children and youth will encourage the local community to provide direct support to military children and families.
Now, therefore, I, Mayor Andy Ryder, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as the Month of the Military Child, and invite all the City of Lacey community members to observe the month by wearing purple each Friday in April and connecting with military families and communities to honor, thank, and support our military children and youth, signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, April 21st, 2022. And if you'd like to come up and accept the. There it is. Okay, you want to say a few, say a few words?
Oh, sure. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing me to come here and receive the official proclamation, and thank you for all of your support on behalf of North Thurston Public Schools. If you don't know me, I am the military liaison for North Thurston Public Schools, and together we advocate for community, you know, cohesiveness and just bringing great things to the community, awareness with the military as well. So, thank you so much for your support, and I do have a few gifts for you as well.
We like gifts.
I should have brought more, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
These are for the people that have actually worked with us.
Well, thank you so much. As the public should be aware of, we have more active duty living in the City of Lacey than the other jurisdiction in Western Washington, and so it is really quite an honor to be able to recognize the children, and we know how difficult it is. School's already difficult, but when you have to juggle changing schools and one of your parents or maybe both of your parents being on active duty, we know how tough that is, and so we really appreciate everything North Thurston Public Schools does to support the children, what our community does to support our military families and the kids in particular. So it's quite, very, very deserving to honor this month, so thank you for what you do. So next up on our agenda, as we're going on to resolutions, Resolution 1116, the Gray Cuyahoga Park Phase 1 Grant Application. Turn it over to Jen.
Recreation and Conservation Office, or RCO, grant categories for the Gray Cuyahoga Park Phase 1A project. There are three funding categories that the project could potentially qualify for, and the reason I say potentially is because staff is still diving into the details of the application process, reviewing the requirements, and there is a certain amount of strategy involved. We, of course, want to look at getting the most funding possible for the project, but there are some restrictions, and so we're still working on that. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I would move to pass Resolution 1116 to authorize ability and flexibility to apply for up to three Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office grant categories.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
By several. Pick one. Is there any, is there any discussion?
A no-brainer.
Yeah, no-brainer. We are so excited about this Gray Cuyahoga Park and finally having a, you know, financial plan in front of us that we can go out and apply for some grants and get that developed, you know, it's just, we're super excited, and so thank you for all you're doing to speed as long as quickly as possible.
Yeah, I look forward to sharing with you which categories once we confirm, so thank you.
That's great. And of course, I know we'll be back in front of this body to talk about the Lacey Community Foundation, but hopefully sooner, sooner than later, that foundation will be able to start applying for some grants as well, so not only for the museum and cultural center, but other projects like Gray Cuyahoga Park, so we're looking forward to that day as well. Is there any other discussion? It's been moved and seconded to adopt this Resolution 1116, talk about the Gray Cuyahoga Park Phase 1A Grant Applications. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries.
I have a question.
Sure.
Anybody get the, want to raise their hand in person now with all the.
I think I, I think I looked at everyone, so we got it down. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. I do not have anything under the mayor's report. City manager.
Honorable mayor and city council have a couple items before you. First up is a MOU for the CDBG 2022-2024 Agreement, and our assistant city managers are going to provide the background on that.
MOU. You can find the information on the MOU on pages 25 through 36 of tonight's agenda packet. This conversation has also come before the council on several occasions, most recently December 9th, 2021, and I just want to remind the council, the city entered into an inter-local agreement with Thurston County as part of the Thurston County Urban Community Development Block Grant Program for fiscal years 2022 to 2024. The recommendation for tonight is going to be to adopt the MOU that is in your packet, which would be with Thurston County, ourselves, Tomwater, for the governance, decision-making, and administration of the Thurston County Urban Community Development Block Grant Program for 2022 to 2024, and that's Attachment 1, which can be found on page 35. So I'll just provide a real high-level overview, although a more in-depth overview was provided in those previous council dates that I mentioned, but this program has been authorized for a number of years since 1974, and the purpose of the program is really to develop viable urban communities by providing decent housing and suitable living environments, expanding economic opportunities, and focusing these efforts on low and moderate income persons, and this allows for a very wide range of community development activities, and this program is administered by HUD. Eligible grantees include metropolitan statistical area, the principal cities within those MSAs, so here in Thurston County, that would be the City of Olympia, other metropolitan cities with a population of over 50,000, and then qualified urban counties with populations of at least 200,000, excluding the populations of the metropolitan statistical principal cities and other qualified metropolitan cities. However, there are some exceptions, and I'll get into that at a very high level here in just a second. How funding is provided, I'm not going to go into all of the details here, but essentially, funding is provided by two formulas to those communities. It's Formula A or Formula B, and whichever one a community would get a higher yield from is which formula would be used for that community. I mentioned briefly eligible uses. This just provides a little bit more information. If you go to page 29 of your packet, you can see a fuller list of eligible activities, but just a few examples would be acquisition of real property, relocation and demolition, rehabilitation of residential and non-residential structures, construction of public facilities and improvements, public services, activities relating to energy conservation and renewable energy and resources, and provision of assistance to profit-motivated businesses to carry out economic development. If you could turn to Table A in the staff report, you can see that based on our census for 2020 and also based on our conversations with representatives from HUD, the City of Lacey is well over that 50,000-person threshold and could now become its own standalone metropolitan city. However, the City of Lacey has elected to continue in the urban county program for 2022 through 2024, so in the future, after 2024, the City of Lacey could become a standalone metropolitan city, and we've heard from HUD representatives that without the City of Lacey's participation in that program, it would actually continue on even though it might not meet that 200,000 threshold that I mentioned earlier for the urban county This just provides a really high level of background of what the city's involvement. So if you look at pre-2013, the city competed for small city community development block grants, and then from 2013 to present, it joined with the Thurston County Urban Community Development Program, first in 2013 to 2015, and then in subsequent cycles, they're always three-year cycles, and as I've mentioned previously in this presentation, back in 2021, the City of Lacey did enter into the ILA for continuing in this program from 2022 to 2024. At that time, the Lacey City Council expressed an interest in having a community development block grant MOU that directed more funding toward affordable housing programs and services, and so city staff had met with representatives to design an MOU. However, this concept is no longer viable, so what we are here tonight is the Attachment 1, which is our proposed community development block grant MOU, which really is similar to our past MOUs. You can see that in Attachment 1, and so this would continue the rotation of funds on an annual basis between the three cities, so Thurston County would be receiving community development block grant funds in 2022, the City of Lacey next year in 2023, and then Tomwater in 2024. And as part of this MOU, every one of those partner entities would continue to provide Thurston County 20% of the total community development block grant funds to administer the program on an annual basis. So just to give some perspective on what that looks like, in Table C is the estimated allocations, and this is actually based on 2021 allocations, so you can see about $1.2 million comes in to the urban county each year for community development block grant funding. You can see that about a million of that gets put to use in each of the jurisdictions after Thurston County's 20% administrative cost, which is around 250,000 each year. So the recommendation tonight is to adopt the proposed MOU between Thurston County and the cities of Lacey, Tomwater, for governance, decision-making, and administration of the community development block grant program for 2022 to 2024. This would provide a governance structure, and it would also allow flexibility for each of the entities to create criteria, so for example, in 2023, you know, should this body want to put a portion of that to affordable housing, as was, you know, designed with the. housing, as was, you know, designed with the draft MOU that we were originally contemplating before this proposal in front of you, that could certainly be a criteria that we could incorporate into the city of Lacey's funding here. Any questions?
Can I get a motion? Can I get a motion, please? Well, I will move that we adopt the proposed memorandum of understanding between the Thurston County and the city of Lacey and Tumwater for the governance, decision-making, and administration of the community development block grant program from 2022 to 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Yeah. Councilmember.
So we've talked about this a lot over the years with disagreement. Do we have any calculations as to what Lacey would get if we were to do it separate from, you know, if we were not to be in part of this, that we would get, because we would get it each year instead of every third year? Do we have any idea what that number looks like?
So based on our conversations with representatives from HUD, it would be roughly equivalent of what we're receiving over, you know, we'd get money every year. And currently, we just would get funding one year. So we would get about the same amount if you were to add up every year that we would be receiving money through this program.
So it's in the $300,000 range each year instead of 900,000 in one of three years? Rough numbers?
Roughly. And again, this changes every year based on what Congress allocates for this program.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember.
In that same vein, not just what Lacey would receive, but if we were a standalone grantee or grant recipient, and the county continued to receive it, would the community in total receive more? Or would it be like a subtraction of the county's receipt to give us the same amount of money?
Councilmember Vasquez, that's a great question. And again, it would depend on how the formulas are used and what thresholds. So I don't have a precise answer to that question. However, you know, again, in conversations with representatives from HUD, they would be able to continue. However, I don't know if it would be a Formula A or a Formula B, so I couldn't. And that was not part of the questions that we asked our HUD representatives when we were checking to see if we were part, we could be eligible for a metropolitan city.
I would be curious about that, though.
Yes, councilmember.
Yeah, one other question. Is there any room for negotiating with the county? 20% seems to be an absurd number. I mean, we're talking $245,000, which if we were to go out separate and not be part of this, although we're, it's the same amount of money over three years, we're not giving up 20% of the money. So it's really a 20% increase to Lacey's community.
I certainly think in future cycles, that is something that we could take a look into and have a conversation with our partners.
I meant for this cycle. We haven't, we have not approved this yet, so I'm curious about this cycle.
Well, councilmember, what I would say is, Tumwater, I believe, has already passed this MOU, and it is anticipated that the county is going to also adopt it within the next week or two. The county does want to have an agreement in place by June of 2022. But if it is this body's desire to go back to the table with the county, we could certainly look into that.
Here's what I suggest. We've had several conversations specifically about the 20%, you know, with the county. And we do understand how much work is involved in this. But this goes to a kind of a bigger issue, is do we want to continue with this partnership that we have had with Lacey, Tumwater, and the rest of Thurston County, with South County in particular not happy in particular with this arrangement? I've had several conversations with South County. And we did put forward saying, hey, you know, we should, affordable housing needs to be our number-one priority for Thurston County. We need more housing. We need more affordable housing. And South County pushed back on that and said, you know what? Affordable housing's not our priority. We have limited funds. This is one, they believe, one source of funding where they can do broader things with. I think there's maybe some disagreement between the county and the South County on what they can and cannot do. But I don't think, I wouldn't suggest this going forward in this partnership. I think there's just, it's caused too many issues between all the parties. And I think this is going to be the last time that I will be voting for this partnership. I'm letting everyone know right now. And so let's get through this funding cycle, and let's start working on what it's going to look like when Lacey has this on an annual basis. That's my two cents.
Mr. Mayor, is that disagreement between South County's priorities and the use of the funding to devote to homelessness, the reason that the current agreement that we were already in is no longer viable?
Yes. We went to South County, and we tried to get them to go along with what we wanted to do. And South County said no, basically. And they pushed back. And, you know, that's their prerogative. That is fine. That's their prerogative. I, you know, they see this as a little bit different than we do. We think we need affordable housing everywhere. You know, they have a little different idea of what they want to use these funds for. And that's fine. And so I don't want to continue to have this, like, argument with every single time this comes around. And so we tried to do, work together. It didn't work out. This will be my last time. I will be supporting this joint venture.
But it's also our prerogative not to support it this time. We don't have to wait till next time necessarily.
Well, yeah, it's almost a little too late, because we did sign it in a local agreement saying we were going to do it. Now we just need to figure out how we're going to spend it, which is what this does. So. Anything else? Then there's been a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
Two opposed, but the motion carries. Thank you.
So we have another item before council, which is to award Lacey Police Station Design Contract. Ashley Smith will provide the presentation on that item.
Good evening, honorable mayor, deputy mayor, and council. This project, the Lacey Police Station, has been in front of council several times, most recently at the February 10th work session, excuse me, in which council approved city staff to move forward with releasing a request for qualifications for a design consultant. And city staff is committed to bringing the contract back in front of council, which is why we're here tonight. All right. So we released a request for qualifications in February and have since selected KMB Architects out of Olympia as the most qualified firm. KMB Architects is the firm that completed the facility master plan and space needs analysis for the initial study that we did through 2019, 2020. And we have negotiated scope and fee with them for the initial stages of design up to, including schematic design, which is approximately 30% of the total. And the purpose for, the purpose of getting just the 30% design at this time is to vet the feasibility of the facility overall and to come up with a realistic cost estimate for that facility as we move forward towards funding the project. So with that in mind, I am recommending award of Lacey Contract Number PW 2022-13 to KMB Architects of Olympia, Washington, in the amount of $658,474.
So moved.
Second. So moved by Councilmember Greenstein, second by Councilmember Stedman. Discussion. Councilmember.
I don't recall. I think this might have been in a previous briefing. But how many respondents did we have to the RFQ?
We had five firms submit a statement of qualifications, and we proceeded with interviews with two firms.
Okay. And was KMB the lowest of the two responsive, apparently competent bidders?
The lowest?
Yeah.
Clarify your question.
The cheaper of the two bidders.
So the RCW requires that we hire engineers and architects based on qualifications only, and we are not allowed to negotiate fees until we've made a selection based on that.
Thank you.
Interesting. I guess I didn't realize that. That's different than, can you explain that?
This isn't a standard public works contract. This is specific for architects and engineers whereby you go by qualifications. And so the RFQ request for qualifications goes out from the city, and then the city reviews those qualifications, determines who's the most qualified for the work, and then enters into a negotiation with them.
So at that point, you don't know the numbers for any of them until after you've chosen who, okay.
Learn something new every day.
Didn't know that either.
I had no idea.
I will say, to add on to your question, Councilmember Vasquez, their fees are based off of a standard percentage from the Washington OFM office. And that's just a percentage, you know, based on our construction cost estimate. So I would expect that to be consistent among other firms as well.
Yep. So with the standard bidding, sometimes we throw it all out and start over, right? In this process, can you do that? I mean, what's the alternative if it was $10 million for an architectural firm, and we didn't like it? What would we do? Would this be?
Well, the city, it's a request for qualifications. There's no binding contract until the city accepts it and enters into that contract.
And I take it you feel comfortable with these numbers?
Yes, ma'am.
I think it's great that it's a local company, and we've all, you know, everyone knows KMB, and they've done work for us before. I think this is great.
Well, it makes sense. They've done all the prior work and the continued needs analysis and everything else. So it makes sense.
And we need a police station, so.
And one other aspect, too, it's just like the North Thurston Public Schools, these facilities become in emergency management places of safety and gathering and information. And last thing you want to do is have it not, you know, engineered or designed correctly.
Very true. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
So just one last item on the city manager's report. So per the interlocal agreement policy under Resolution 1067, I signed an agreement with the United States Department of Agriculture. This is for an integrated wildlife management program. We sometimes have nuisance wildlife that causes adverse impacts to our natural areas. It's a mouthful right there. So that contract value is $12,670.50. It's a year-to-year contract, so we've had this partnership for many years. But we assume that we'll do another year, but this will expire at the end of this year. So that is my report on that. Thank you.
Next up is standing general committees, utilities committee.
Thank you, mayor. So our utilities committee met on April 4. Our public works staff provided us with a virtual tour of how our water and wastewater service is managed through the SCADA system. We have some very unique and complex systems to monitor, and I'm personally grateful that we have a competent staff that can keep up with it. This is also a reminder of how important it is to keep and incentivize experienced and talented staff. In the future, we may need to get creative in how we capture new hires as we move on throughout the years. But it was very informative. Glad that they put that together for us. And I would encourage us to have more opportunities like that, to have a real deep understanding of how our staff operates, and help the council understand some of the potential shortfalls in the near or long term with, you know, retirements and everything else. We have some great people on our staff now, but five, 10 years from now, what is that going to look like? And that was an eye-opener for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have something? Okay. Then let's go on to boards, commissions, and committee reports. I'm up first. I actually do not have a report, but I will be reporting out on the Regional Housing Council when we get to Councilmember Cox. And so, deputy mayor.
I too do not have a report.
Then Councilmember Cox.
Righty. Well, the only thing I have for you is that the Climate Mitigation Steering Committee meets on Monday. And I understand mayor will give the report on the most recent Regional Housing Council meeting. And I hope Councilmember Vasquez covered the lot meeting, that she can give you the highlights. I've been away in Florida with a family emergency.
Yes, thank you. So I'll go first to the Regional Housing Council, which met on April 13. There was a really quick meeting. It was like a half-hour-long meeting. They mostly discussed the retreat planning, which is coming up. We have a two-day retreat. The first day of the retreat is going to be May 6, Woodland Creek Community Center. And the second day is going to be a week later on May 13 at the Olympia City Hall. And they also discussed the 2022 funding review and allocation calendar for the Human Services Fund and to the 2163 funds. And so the Regional Housing Council is scheduled to review and make recommendations on May 11 to the Board of County Commissioners, and scheduled to review the Regional Housing Council recommendations on the June 7. And that is the Regional Housing Council. You want to do a lot?
Sure thing. It was my first time attending LOT, and I was able to manage to get onto the meeting. They got me the link. So they covered, you know, what happened at the March 9 meeting. They went over some disbursements. We got a staff report on the Public Health Emergency Support Program interlocal agreement extension. They're extending that just a little longer. They also talked about the interlocal agreements for wastewater agency response, just the way that all of our jurisdictions work together to manage wastewater effectively. And they spent some time going over some of the plans for the future digester system improvements that are going to be taking place. They're actually already in process. So they're in phase two. They were approving the design concept for phase two. So that was about it.
Thank you. And that's it? Councilmember Cox?
Yes, and thank you to my colleagues.
Yeah. Councilmember Greenstein.
Okay, so EMS Medic One met on the 20th yesterday. I actually chaired the meeting because the chair was unavailable. We're going through, so we actually voted on unanimously approved bylaws change, which would change the officer's term from one year to two years. That has to now go to the county commission for approval, as EMS is an advisory board only to the county commission. So it has to be approved by them, which I'm sure it will be. We're in the middle of a 90-day no-divert test, which, so the hospitals actually came to Medic One and asked us to do this test with them, a 90-day test, where none of the hospitals go on divert, so that they take whoever comes. And what they found so far, 30 days into it, which was a slower month than normal, but it did not delay anything. It actually worked better than our normal diversion process. So we have high hopes that this could actually improve the system overall. So we'll see how it goes over the next 60 days. And the only other thing was, we went over the 2021 final budget, and everything stayed within budget. We expended 98% of the budget, so everything went, we had a fine year. The only other thing I wanted to mention is, I also sit on the left one board. We are meeting more frequently than normal. In the past, this was a meeting that happened only when necessary. Right now, we're meeting a couple of times a month, actually, in order to do some work on rewriting some of the bylaws there and policies and procedures. Currently, we were taking a pretty deep dive into the policies and procedures for dental and long-term care for our retired police officers that are still in F1. And we'll be, we're moving along with that over the next few months. So anyway, that is my report.
So just a quick question. So we were diverting quite a few down to Schehalis, up to Tacoma. And so what they realized is that the time it takes to divert, get them, and have those people seen, and the new location is actually longer or not as quick as if they stayed there and waited.
You would think. The diversion actually doesn't work quite like that when we go on divert. Divert really means we go to a round robin, where we go, one goes to St. Pete's, one goes to Capital Medical, one goes to Schehalis. So actually, they're part of that rotation of three. So we're not doing that round robin. And instead, the medics are able to take the patient to the most appropriate hospital for their condition or based on distance, you know, what's closest. What we've had is, we've not broken two hours of a wait time. And when I talk about the wait time, that is that the paramedics get to the hospital, and they're waiting for, to be able to transfer that patient from the vehicle to the hospital staff, because someone has to take that patient, right? Before this, and again, hard to say how well it's going to go. It was an extremely slow month compared to a normal month for some reason. There were times when we were reaching over three hours, where literally we had paramedics sitting at a hospital for three-plus hours to transport, to move a patient into a hospital. We've not had that happen since we went on diversion. But again, slow month. We'll have to see how things go over these next couple of months to get a better idea.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. So I've seen a lot of people, affects a lot of people out there, so. Councilmember Stedman.
I have one report. Law and Justice Council Thurston County met today at 4:30. And with our meeting being moved up to 6, left very little time to get over here. But I was watching the meeting as I was driving in the car, but I wasn't participating in speaking or anything like that. You know, with our--
You got that, chief?
It was a listening-only.
Listening-only.
Listening only. But yeah, this is a, I wanted to get chief's attention because he is the professional with the, with what was on the agenda. We had our legislative district here today, senators and state reps, and it was on the House bills, of course, and this relating to law and justice, we were going over all the ones that were pertinent to law and justice. So a lot of things that they went over, use of force, definition of force, tactics and tools that are less lethal, medical-related issues. You know, chiefs can probably give a better oversight and make it sound more sensible.
At the last work session, we covered that, so.
Yep, we covered this on the last work session, so we got a lot of the updates from the fixes. So we really appreciate, we know there's still, we got to go back and talk about pursuit and what that means, and so we'll go back that next legislative session and get to work on that. Other than that, that was my report, but I did want to give Councilmember Cox my best, thinking of you, under these situations with family, just thought some prayers to you.
Thank you. From all of us, for sure. Councilmember Kunkel.
Thank you, Mayor. So a quick report for Lacy South Sound Chamber. The next chamber forum is going to be May 4th. Our keynote speaker will be Congresswoman Marilyn Strickland. For the Visitor and Convention Bureau, we met the 19th. Some of the highlights, we have a new website and CRM going live at the end of May. This new site will be a better tool to help us capture more applicable interest and patterns with potential tourism, to give us a better picture of who is touring where and when. And we also have the new Tread app for Washington, Trails, Recreation, Education, Advocacy Development. That's coming this summer for consumers to add to our ability to anticipate more tourism in the region. Occupancy rates for hotels in February were up 15% from last year, and unique website visits for the Experience Olympia and Beyond were up 35%, which is pretty darn good. And last but not least, we have a solid waste advisory committee met April 13th, and we did not have a quorum. So the members present, we all witnessed four presentations consisting of the litter cleanup program, recycling and waste reduction program, environmental health education program, and the solid and hazardous waste program. And that is my report.
It'll be interesting to hear what SWAC has to say with the new legislation that's requiring now compostable. Did you guys talk about that at all? Do you know if it's going to be an upcoming agenda?
I know it's coming. It is kind of interesting, and, you know, I have a lot of respect for what they do down there. I didn't realize what a well-oiled machine that landfill is, and making best use of every inch of territory. It's pretty phenomenal.
Great, well, thanks. Wouldn't you hear something? We'd love to get an update on that. Next up, Councilmember Vasquez.
So a couple of quick reports. Inner City Transit met yesterday, April 20th, and they welcome new staff, which they always do. It's very lovely. But they took time to recognize Lita Roberts, who Councilmember Cox reported out on a few months ago. She was the woman who stopped her bus to intervene when someone was standing on the precipice on an overpass and contributed to saving her life. So they gave her the above and beyond award, so they took some time to recognize her. She was there, and she was very grateful, but it was nice. They gave a report on the 2021 Walk and Roll Youth Education Program, which was actually very successful despite not being able to have meetings inside of buildings or do educational events inside of buildings during the 2021 season, and they're getting ready to roll it out again, trying to encourage youth in our community to roller skate, bicycle, walk, just get around the community in more active transportation modes. They talked a lot about the new Patterson facility. We got a beautiful report on the Patterson facility. They're submitting the flooring for a design award. It's really, it's really lovely. And the reason they were showing us the beautiful pictures of the design was because they needed to pass an amendment to the budgeted amount so that they could give just a little bit more to get the second phase or additional money for the design phase of the south parcel of that build done. But it's a $95 million project, and they needed another 1.5 million, and it's been in the works since the 90s, so we were like, that's pretty all right. It's not too bad, considering costs have gone up substantially since the 90s. That was it for Inner City Transit. During the ORCA meeting, we focused a lot on identifying and sort of confirming performance measures for the executive director, which was a nice conversation to have. He's new, and he's stepping into the shoes of someone who was there for many years. So he worked with the board members to say, is this really what you want me to be doing? Here's what I'm going to focus on to build the organization. So that was a nice conversation to have. And I have no report for Thurston Regional Planning Council. They meet next on May 6th.
Great. Well, we have reached the end of our agenda, so we're going to be adjourned to a executive session to talk about a acquisition, land acquisition, real estate acquisition, but we're going to need like five minutes probably to get set up over there. So, you know, I'm going to say 20. So we always say something, then I always have to come back and edit. So we're going to, we'll, we can, we'll start the executive session in like five minutes, and then we'll go to 7:30. I'll come back here by 7:30 and adjourn the meeting. But until then, you keep it classy, Lacy, and we're going to adjourn to an executive It's 7:30, and we're back from our executive session to talk about real estate acquisition. No decisions were made, so we are at the end of our agenda. And with that, I will call this meeting adjourned. As always, keep it classy, Lacey.